Hi, welcome everybody. It's we'll go ahead and get started at seven o'clock. This is Monday, November sixteenth. Welcome everyone to our council meeting. We have with us tonight Pastor Jeff Pennington with Smyrna First Baptist Church at 1275 Church Street. Pastor Pennington, please come on up and do our invocation and pledge and will everybody please rise?
We're so thankful to be able to gather together tonight. Thank you for this wonderful community that we all get to live in and enjoy. Father, we do acknowledge that this is such a hard time for so many people and we just pray for your continued grace. That Father, you would sustain us in this time. That Father, you'd give us a sensitivity for others that would be reminded that sometimes our neighbors may be in a really difficult place and I just pray that we will be sensitive in this season. Lord, I thank you so much for our, our council. Father, thank you for our mayor. Pray that you will give them wisdom as they govern in these challenging days, but Father, I pray that you'll continue just to give them all that they need. We thank you again for this night and in Christ name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor for being with us. And thank you for bringing your daughter tonight as well. Item two is agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. Item three A 2020 dash four five eight is a proclamation and recognition of Small Business Saturday, November twenty eighth, 2020. And I believe we have some representatives from the Smyrna Business Association here. Come on up if you don't mind and I'm going to ask Councilman Welsh to read the proclamation and then if you'd like to say something after, I'd be glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read this and then I'll, I'll come down and present it. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Small Business Saturday, November twenty eighth, 2020. Whereas the government of Smyrna, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they have made to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States which represent ninety nine point seven of all firms with, with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for sixty four point nine percent of the net jobs created from two thousand to two thousand eighteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, sixty two percent of U.S. small businesses reported that they, they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of twenty twenty in order to stay in business. Sixty five percent of U.S. small business owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And three quarters of the U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas ninety six percent of the consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And ninety seven percent of the consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agreed that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas ninety five percent of the consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop and eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas Smyrna, Georgia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, I, Derek Norton, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this, the sixteenth day of November in the year of our Lord, 2020. Derek Norton.
Thank you Corky. Sarah, you want to say anything?
On behalf of the Smyrna Business Association, I want to thank the city for its continuous support of the business community, especially during the COVID crisis this year. The Smyrna Business Association seeks to promote, engage, and connect professionals and businesses in Smyrna through outreach, programs, education, and networking. By strengthening the local businesses and supporting the community, we hope to continue to make Smyrna a vibrant and desirable place to live and work. Thank you to the mayor and city council for making this proclamation as a show of your commitment. Is it the mic?
Can so, we have anybody that might be able to take a look at that and see if we can. Sounded like impending doom.
I know. See if I can finish. Thank you to the mayor and city council for making this proclamation, for showing your continued commitment to local businesses. And to the community, I want to encourage you to shop local, not only on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, but throughout the holiday season and throughout 2021. Your local businesses need your support more than ever. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here and for all you do for our, our small businesses and I'll just tell you, we've just got our results back from our grant application process for all the small businesses with CARES money. I'm happy to report that we were able to help a hundred and nine small businesses here in Smyrna with some relief during this downtime, so thanks again for all you do.
Thank you.
On behalf of the mayor and city council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only other things on the mayoral report, I want to make sure everybody remembers we have an air quality oversight committee. That's the steragatics issue. We're going to be hearing from a national expert who has some thoughts about the numbers that we got from our air quality testing that we did a few months back, ten o'clock here in the community center. And then I wanted to talk real quickly about an extraordinary act of kindness that we had, I guess it was last week or a couple of weeks ago. There's a foundation called the Tunnels to Towers Group and it's founded by the brother of Stephen Siller. Stephen Siller was a firefighter in New York on September eleventh and he left his shift and was going home and he got a call on the radio, he heard what had happened and he, he turned his truck around, told his family that he'd be a little late, meeting him for golf later that day and he got to the, I guess the Brooklyn Tunnel and it was already closed, so he strapped all his gear on his back and went the rest of the way on foot and ended up, ended up dying and that's how they, that's the, his brother started the foundation in his honor. What, what's awesome about this foundation and everything that they do, they paid off the mortgage for Chris Ewing, our fallen officer's family's house. And I just wanted to report that because I thought that was such an awesome thing that they did for somebody who did so much for our community. The next issue we have is land issues, zonings, and annexations and we have several. The first is four A, twenty twenty dash four zero three, public hearings, zoning request Z twenty dash zero one one, rezoning from G C to R fifteen for the development of one single-family home at a density of one point six four units per acre, point six one acres landlot five ninety-two at fifteen twenty-nine Roswell Street, Thomas Trebus. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thomas Trebus is seeking approval of a rezoning for fifteen twenty-nine Roswell Street from General Commercial to R fifteen for the development of one single-family detached residence at a density of one point six four eight units per acre. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing single-family structure to construct one new single-family residence. The existing lot is twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eight square feet in area. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of six zero at the October twelfth, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from General Commercial to R fifteen for the development of one single-family unit at a density of one point six four units per acre with conditions.
This is in Mr. Lindley's district and I'm sure he's going to want to turn it over to Joey for his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman Joey Sobbs, planner two with Community Development. This is zoning case C two zero dash zero one one. As was mentioned, it was heard by the planning board on October twelfth. They recommended approval, six zero. The property address is fifteen twenty-nine Roswell Street. It's point six one acres. There is a single-family structure on the property now. It's zone General Commercial. He wants to remove that house and build a new house, so it needs to be rezoned. It's going to be rezoned to R fifteen. The adjacent properties are a mixture of zonings from future commercial, limited commercial, townhome, and R D A and R fifteen. Existing land use is moderate density residential. It will remain moderate, moderate density residential. This proposed site plan. The proposed setbacks are the regular R fifteen setbacks, front setback thirty-five, side setback of ten, rear setback of thirty. It's about a thirty-five hundred square foot house with a pool and deck. The stormwater detention facility is located there in the front. And the purpose of that is there's a variance requested to increase impervious coverage from thirty-five percent to fifty percent, so we're requiring them to provide detention and water quality to mitigate. Here's the proposed elevations. Picture of the subject property and the adjacent properties. Staff's recommending approval from G C to R fifteen for the development of one detached single-family residence at a density of one point six four units per acre with the following conditions. Standard conditions, one regarding the architecture, two underground utilities, three responsible for traffic improvements, requiring debris, no debris to be buried, and compliance with our tree plan and tree planting schedule. Special conditions are the setbacks, front thirty-five feet, side ten feet, rear thirty Again, the requirement for, well, to allow the maximum fifty percent impervious coverage and to provide water quality program. They'll be required to be responsible for water and sewer improvements and any additional stormwater improvements. Approval is subject to the site plan submitted and the elevation submitted. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Joey? Thank you, Joey. Is the applicant here? I'd like to invite you up.
Hey Mayor, how are you doing?
Good.
I'm Thomas Trebus and this is my wife and I's, I guess forever home is what we're looking to build, so we're proud of it and it's been about a year in the making, so we're hoping to get started before long and be Smyrna residents for a long time.
Very good. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak for or against this, I'd invite them to come up now and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley. Thank you. Do you, do you currently live in Smyrna?
Yeah, we do.
Good deal.
We live actually in Williams Park, so right around the corner from.
Good deal. Well, we're glad you're in. Ward three. Thanks Rusty and Joey for your, your work on this and without further ado, motion due pass is previously read and reported. Have a motion due approved. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. Thanks for staying in Smyrna. Item B is twenty twenty dash four zero four. This is a public hearing, zoning request Z twenty dash Z, it says zero one two, rezoning from R twelve to R eight for the development of two new single-family homes at a density of four point eight four units per acre, zero point four one three acres, landlot six sixty-four, twenty-five eighty-eight Bates Street, Bakari Brooks. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Bakari Brooks is seeking approval of a rezoning for twenty-five eighty-eight Bates Street from R twelve to R eight for the development of two single-family detached residences at a density of four point eight four units per acre. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the parcel into two lots to construct two individual single-family detached residences. The proposed lots will be eight point, eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-four and nine thousand thirty-one square foot. The homes will face Bates Street and have individual driveways with front entry homes. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of six zero at the October twelfth, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R twelve to R eight for the development of two single-family units at a density of four point eight four units per acre with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is also in Ward three. Mr. Lindley?
Thank you. As Mr. Bennett said, Planning Board recommended approval, six zero, at the October meeting. The property is twenty-five eighty-eight Bates Street, point four one three acres. Currently, it's a vacant lot and the proposal is to build two detached single-family residences. Existing zoning is R twelve and proposed zoning is R eight. It's surrounded by other R twelve lots and R D A lots. The existing land use is medium density residential, which allows up to six units per acre, so it'll be below that density cap. This is proposed site plan. It will retain the required R eight zoning setbacks, front setback of twenty-five, side setback of five, and rear setback of twenty. It'll have front entry garages with access on Bates Street and it will have individual stormwater detention facilities. We're requiring right-of-way dedication and curb and gutter and sidewalk improvements. No requested variances for this property. These are proposed elevations, the subject property, and adjacent properties. So staff's recommending approval of the rezoning from R twelve to R eight for the development of two single-family homes at a density of four point eight four units per acre with the following conditions. Standard conditions is just like the one before, architectural components, tree planting, tree schedule. Special conditions are the minimum setbacks, front twenty-five feet from existing right-of-way, side five feet, and rear twenty feet. Driveway will be a minimum twenty-foot length from the building to private driveway. They're providing much more than that. They'll be required to dedicate, dedicate right-of-way along Bates Street to achieve twenty-five feet from the property line to center line of the road and provide curb gutter and sidewalk at the front edge of the property. It'll be a maximum height of thirty-five feet and they will be required to meet fire access requirements, water sewer improvements, and stormwater requirements. Approval is subject to the compliance with the site plan submitted with the application. Any questions?
Any questions, any questions, is it Joey? No? Thank you. Is the applicant here? I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Good. How are you? Good. So essentially, like we talked about at the planning meeting, we're just identifying a need in Smyrna, which is to provide some more affordable housing in that neighborhood. I was speaking to Councilman Lindsay and, and we both agree that neighborhood could use some additional investment and that's really what we're trying to do is get some more affordable housing into those areas.
Any questions of the applicant?
What's, first of all, thanks for bringing the project forward. What's, what's your anticipated price point of the homes?
Excellent question. So we're, we're hoping to hit between three seventy and three ninety. It just really is going to depend on the time we bring it to market, but we're, we're really trying to stay no more than four hundred because then, you know, you're starting to creep outside of affordable.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item, please come up now and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Lindley? Yes, sir. Thank you. Good to see you again this evening. Is he noted, revisited, it seems like a couple of, couple of months ago, but had a good, good conversation. I think it's a sound project, gotten a lot of good feedback from Rose Garden Hills, so with that, motion due pass is previously read and presented. Any discussion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess definition of affordable is all relative, isn't it? Item C, twenty twenty dash four six zero. It's a public hearing, plat approval with variance V twenty dash zero six five, subdivision of one lot into two lots, two point four acres, landlot three thirty-seven, three eighty-four, thirty-eight thirteen North Cooper Lake Road. And this is Corky A Welch, who I believe has recused himself. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is requesting approval to subdivide one lot into two lots while retaining the existing R fifteen zoning category. The property is currently occupied with two residential structures. The subdivision will allow each structure to occupy separate lots. Track one will be zero point seven two acres, thirty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine square feet, and track two will be one point five one acres, sixty-five thousand six hundred and twenty square feet. Ultimately, the structure on track two will be demolished. However, until such time occurs, a side setback reduction from ten feet to two point three feet is required while the structure remains. Community Development has reviewed the proposed plat against the requirements of the R fifteen zoning district. The variance for track two is necessary until such time that the existing structure is demolished. The subject property will maintain an R fifteen zoning classification and will not increase the density for the property as two homes currently occupy the property. Community Development recommends approval of the requested reconfiguration and replacing, I'm sorry, replating with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Joey?
Thank you. This is a plat approval with a variance. Planning Board recommended approval, seven zero. Subject property is at thirty-eight thirteen North Cooper Lake Road, about two point four acres, zoned R fifteen. The adjacent properties are R fifteen and then R twenty. The property currently has two structures on it, but it's one lot, so the proposal is to subdivide the lots, so each house is on its own lot. It'll remain R fifteen. This is the existing lot configuration. You can see one house at the top and then one below. The proposal is to subdivide the property so that each house is on its own lot. The one house will require a setback reduction from ten feet to two point four feet until it's demolished, which that's ultimately the plan. The setbacks will be thirty-five feet front, side two point three feet, rear thirty feet, and that side setback is only until it's demolished and then that setback reduction goes away. This portion of the property will be combined with the property that faces Austin Drive, so it'll be like that. So the requested variance is a reduction of the side setback from ten feet to two point four feet. Again, pictures of the subject property and adjacent properties. Staff recommends approval of the plat approval with the following conditions. One, to allow the reduction of the side setback from ten feet to two point four, and two, that it's conditioned upon compliance with the site plan submitted. Any questions?
Any questions of Joey? Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Joey. I, I do want a clarification about the, so the variance is only for this house, but once that it's demolished, the new, it will no longer have a variance with the property.
That's correct.
Okay. Does that need to be part of the motion or is it in there in the stipulations? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Cochran.
Generally, our non-conforming ordinance requires, you know, anything over fifty percent of value for reconstruction, it is no longer grandfathered in non-conforming. So once this house is gone, then that setback that was requested goes away.
And then the other question I had was about the length of time that, is there any projection on the length of time before the house is demolished, the older one? And does anyone live in it currently, the structure?
I mean, that would have to be the applicant to answer that. My understanding is it's being subdivided so it can be sold so that somebody can build on that property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Gould?
And I think to answer that question, I think there is a, the property is leased, just that's what was written in the application until May sometime. Joey, what are the resulting, the zoning is R fifteen, is that right?
Yes, sir.
What are the resulting sizes of the property, of the two lots?
They're pretty large. Can't read it on the site plan, but it was in the description.
Thirty-one thousand plus and sixty-five thousand plus square feet each?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the only reason we're here tonight is because of the temporary variance? Or because if that, that variance wasn't the case, right, there just wouldn't have been a plat approval process and would not have been in front of Mayor and Council?
It would still be brought to you, but it wouldn't need a variance, so we're just doing it simultaneously.
Gotcha. Is that the case? Just to be sure, that if the plat approval with no variances, that comes to Mayor and Council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim looks skeptical, but he did accept your response. You're earning it tonight, I'm telling you.
We had one last year that was not, so.
The issue was it wasn't advertised. We don't have to post on the property, but it still goes to Planning Board and the Mayor and Council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions of Joey or discussion? This is also a public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item, please come forward now. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and since this is Mr. Welch, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Glenn Pickens to handle this item, please.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve twenty-twenty dash four-six-zero.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Thank you. Somebody go tell Corky to come on back in. Congratulations, Corky, it was a close one, six-zero. Item D is twenty-twenty dash four-six-one, public hearing, appeal of variance approval, point-nine-zero acres, landlot five-fifty-seven, fourteen-sixty Memory Lane, CMS Customs, Custom Homes LLC. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. CMS Custom Homes LLC is seeking approval for a reduction in minimum lot size at fourteen-sixty Memory Lane for the development of two single-family detached residences at a density of two-point-two-two units per acre. The proposed lots will be nineteen thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet and nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-four square feet. The subdivision was created in nineteen fifty-one, and the subject property was originally two lots, lot number eleven and lot number twelve of the FM Collier subdivision. The subject property was annexed into the city in two thousand and one, and the R twenty zoning designation was applied to the subject property, even though the lots were below the minimum twenty thousand square feet lot area requirement, making the lots non-conforming lots under the R twenty zoning district. The License and Variance Board held a public hearing for the variance and recommended approval by vote of three-zero at the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty meeting. An appeal was filed by adjacent property owners on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Community Development is supportive of the variance request for reduction of minimum lot size from twenty thousand square feet to nineteen thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet. Staff feels comfortable that this will not create a future precedent due to this property previously being two recorded lots of record, and tying approval of the request to the specific site plan. Therefore, Community Development recommends approval of the variance request for reduction of minimum lot size for the development of two single-family units at a density of two-point-two-two units per acre with one condition.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Mr. Gould's district. It looks like Rusty's going to give Joey a break and come up here. You want to turn it over to Rusty?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, if you could give us some background, please.
Good evening. I'm Rusty Martin. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Smyrna. The subject property, what you have before you is a request for variance approval. It went to the License and Variance Board on October fourteenth. They had a hearing, and they recommended approval of the variances by a vote of three-zero. The subject property is located in Ward Six. It's off Memory Lane. It's fourteen-sixty Memory Lane. The existing zoning is R twenty. The subject property was subdivided in nineteen fifty-one as part of the FM Collier subdivision. It was lots eleven and twelve originally. In nineteen fifty-three, it looks like, based off the tax records, they built a home and a pool on that property, as well as a shed. That shed was built over the property line. The home was built on lot twelve, and the pool was built on lot eleven. And just to give you some history on how we got here, obviously, it was originally subdivided in nineteen fifty-one. The original lot size for eleven was nineteen thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty square feet, and lot twelve was nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty feet. So they basically have a hundred-foot lot width each lot, and the depth is ninety-six feet, or just over ninety-five feet. As I stated before, the house was constructed in nineteen fifty-three, and on lot twelve and on lot eleven, the pool was constructed as well. The overall subdivision, Forest Hills, was annexed into the city in two thousand and one. An R twenty designation was placed on the property. During the zoning process, if the city has a corresponding zoning district that is similar to the zoning in the county, then that property will maintain that zoning district that's similar to the county zoning district. So the county has an R twenties district, we have an R twenty district, so it just carries over as R twenty, even though it was a substandard lot of record at that time. So... So basically, if we go back in the start of this process last year, their first attempt in, based off discussions with the city, and how it was reflected in the tax records and on Cobb GIS, there was one lot shown. We thought it would be best to run them through the rezoning process. We recommended rezoning from R twenty to R twenty conditional, to reestablish the lots and allow the neighborhood to negotiate stipulations to make a better development. The PNZ Board recommended denial by a vote of seven-zero, and then the mayor and council recommended denial by a vote of six-one. Fast forward to the middle of this year, or the end of summer. In discussions with the property owner, they made claims that, you know, this is two recorded lots of records. We went back to study the property. We looked at previous deeds. All the deeds reflect the property as lots eleven and twelve of the FM Collier subdivision. And we could not find a plat that called for the consolidation of the property. I called Cobb County. I've asked them to clarify how that happened. They have no record of a request to consolidate the plat, or consolidate the properties. At that point, the, we determined it to be two lots. The city's zoning ordinance has a requirement for substandard lots of record under section twelve oh eight, that any substandard lot of record, you've got to come in for a variance to build a structure on that lot. So that's also tied into the lot size reduction as well. They submitted for the variance. The variance request was before the License and Variance Board on October fourteenth. The Board recommended approval by a vote of three-zero. And then we're here today based on an appeal from the adjoining property owners, which was filed on ten-twenty-three. This is the proposed plan for the subdivision. They'll have a house on each property. And these are the proposed homes. These are the same homes they proposed during the rezoning. They're going to build these houses to the R twenty specifications for R twenty lots, so it's going to have a front setback of thirty-five feet, a side setback of twelve feet, and a rear setback of thirty-five. And then obvious, the reason we're here today is for the reduction from the lot, for the lot size from twenty thousand square feet down to nineteen thousand, four-sixty-three. This is the subject property. There was a house on the property back when it went through the rezoning process. Since that process, they've demolished the house and the accessory structures. These are the adjoining properties in the neighborhood, across Memory Lane and Northview Place. With all variance requests, there are four review standards. The first is whether there are unique and special circumstances or extraordinary or exceptional conditions applying to the property in question, or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same district. The lots were subdivided in nineteen ninety-five prior to the adoption of a zoning ordinance. The lots were placed in the R twenty zoning district and were non-conforming lots due to the enactment of the zoning ordinance. In two thousand and seven, the city enacted an ordinance requiring the issuance of a variance prior to the construction of a home on a substandard lot of record. So those are some things that staff has reviewed in accordance to the variance review standards. Number two, the review standard is whether any alleged hardship is self-created by any person having an interest in the property, nor is the result of mere disregard or ignorance of the provisions for which relief is sought. The property was subdivided in nineteen fifty-one prior to anybody as part of this application having any effect on it. The neighborhood was annexed in two thousand and one, and the R twenty zoning was applied to them. So all these actions that got to these, to the lots being substandard lots of record and having a zoning district that made the lots non-conforming lots was all predates the applicant and not of his creation. Condition number three, whether the strict application of the relevant provisions of the zoning ordinance would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the property for which the variance is sought. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of both lots as originally plotted, due to the lots being substandard lots of record. The applicant could build one home, but he would be giving up the full use of the second lot and the rights invested in that lot. Number four, whether the variance proposed is the minimum variance which makes possible for reasonable use of the property. The variance is the minimum variance requested. The applicant plans to construct the homes in accordance with the requirements of the R twenty zoning district with respect to setbacks, building heights, and impervious surface area coverage. The variance is to use the property as originally plotted in nineteen fifty-one with the zoning rules placed on the property. With that being said, we recommend approval of the variance with the reduction in lot size, and then the stipulation to tie it to the site plan and elevation submitted. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions of Rusty, before we call the applicant up?
Hi, Rusty. Thank you for that. I just had one question about, you said it was zoned R twenty when it was in the county before the city annexed it in. Do you happen to know when that zoning was placed on the property?
I went back to the county zoning ordinance, and I think they adopted our ordinance in nineteen seventy-two.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of Rusty? Mr. Wagner? Turn that off, Rusty. He gets angry every once in a while.
All right, we'll see. So I wanted to ask if a property like this, of this size, came into the city as of now, right, let's say it was a new annexation in the city that was a lot size of less than twenty thousand square feet, we would typically put the R fifteen zoning on top of that? Or R twenty with conditions if it was this?
Yes, we would go through the rezoning process to subdivide that property if it wasn't originally subdivided. And if it was below the density allowed in the zoning district, then it's got to go through the rezoning process, and we'd place it in the appropriate zoning district. So yes, that would be the process.
And I just want to make sure, I'd be correct in saying that if this was, had originally been zoned when it first came in as R fifteen, that we wouldn't, it wouldn't need to go through this variance process to build these two homes, assuming everything else was met in accordance with R fifteen zoning?
If when they annexed the property, they went through each property and zoned it according to the correct, to the lot size and not made non-conforming lots, and yes, it should have been R fifteen, and we probably wouldn't be going through this process.
And remind me of the size of the lots that are adjacent to the subject property?
There are two lots immediately to the east that are nineteen thousand, six-hundred square feet, more or less. There are some R fifteen lots that are catty corner across Northview, the intersection of Northview Place and Memory Lane, where that starts as R fifteen and it goes to the back of the Reed House at that point. And some of those houses are below twenty thousand square feet, but they're above the R fifteen zoning category.
And the one you mentioned that was nineteen thousand, six-hundred square feet is also zoned as R twenty?
The houses on Memory Lane, yes, they're all R twenty.
Okay, that's all.
Rusty, if you could, I've gotten, obviously, a few questions, to say the least, about some, just today's process here. Could you describe to folks in the audience why we're here for variance when the mayor and council heard this case back in February? So it's a little bit unusual, right? So could you maybe highlight, explain why that's why we're here in essence?
Right. Essentially, at the beginning of this process, they came in, and we looked at the city's GIS and the county's GIS, and it reflects it as one property. So we looked at it, we looked at their plans. They were below the R twenty requirements. So when your density is below what is required for the zoning district, you would rezone to a different, to a different district, which would be the R fifteen. And we looked across, looked catty corner, and it was R fifteen. We thought it wouldn't be a big issue to, because it had originally been two lots, it would make two lots that are similar to everything else in the neighborhood. So we said, let's go back through the rezoning process, let's formalize this and get the lots split on record. It'd give the neighborhood an opportunity to weigh in on the development if they wanted to address architecture, landscaping, anything to do with the development. And, you know, and at that point, it would move forward. I didn't expect it to be to this point, at this point. But it has. So it ultimately got turned down by the council. So while, after that, they've come back and they've made the claim that, no, this is two lots of record. We don't have a consolidation plat. We don't have any record of it being requested to be consolidated. Y'all need to consider this as two lots. So I went back and looked at it, and all the deeds reflected is two lots, lot eleven and lot twelve. So I said, well, that's fine. If it's two lots, we still require you to go through the variance process to build homes on substandard lots of record. So now we've gone from a rezoning request, changing from one zoning district to a different zoning district, to now a variance request, which is just a request to waiver from a zoning requirement, a spatial requirement, or setback requirement, you know, building height, whatever. They're not asking to change the zoning. They're asking to, for a waiver from a specific requirement in the ordinance.
Okay, thanks. You mentioned two lots, right? But in your background, you mentioned that the lots have been consolidated into one when the house was built over the property line, and then further consolidated into one when the pool was installed later on. So how do you, how do we rationalize that? How do we make terms with that when you've stated it's one lot, but the applicant says it's two, and we allow them to move forward with the variance request?
It was formalized in the form of a plat as two lots. There was construction of a house, construction of a pool. The accessory structure is over the lot line that separated the two lots. There is no records that show that that was formalized in any way. And the construction of those features was predates the zoning ordinance. It was done in nineteen fifty-three. So... I don't have any documentation to say that they were consolidated. It just shows up as consolidated in the county. I've called the county to ask for any formal paperwork that showed that, you know, the property owner requested it to be consolidated, and they weren't... and they, they weren't able to show anything or say anything. In fact, they said, well, if you want us to put it back, we can put it back 'cause we don't have any documentation showing it. So the, the question is, was it officially consolidated at that point? So, um...
So if there's a, a question, a reasonable question, that people can look at it differently, why would we allow the applicant to go through a variance process when there is some uncertainty?
They've gone through the rezoning process, they're going through the variance process. They're exhausting all their available legal remedies, um, before they have to go through the court system.
If it's not approved.
If it's not approved.
Um, do you think this sets a bit of a precedence? Because we have a lot of these lots around the city, not just in Forest Hills, but when we, when an applicant brings a case to mayor and council and it's decided, perhaps not in favor for the applicant, that they then turn to a variance appeals process? Cause we know there's quite a few of these lots, you know, throughout some of the, some of the older parts of the city. Are we setting ourselves up here for a problem?
I mean, the variance process is set up to address issues like that and non-conformity issues. So you guys have the ability to review every case that comes up and, and review it based on its merits and vote it up or down according to if it meets the merits of the review standards. I mean, I don't... It's a hard question to answer for citywide because different areas of the city have different circumstances. Do I think this might be a precedent in, in Forest Hills? I don't, I don't think so. I'm looking at the, the overall area and seeing the properties that may have two lots on them or multiple lots that were previously plotted. I don't think so with the amount of improvements that have already been there and the value that's being created in those lots that it may not be economically feasible to do. So no, I don't, I don't know that it may be an issue for this specific area. For other areas where the housing value is lower, then yes, it may be.
I'd, I'd agree with that, but I mean, I think we all know, Susan might wanna speak to this, that there are these situations around the city. And if we have a developer comes and brings an application to us and for whatever reason it's denied and then they say, well, let's just do an end around and let's go to the variance process. So maybe I'm simplifying that, but I do see a potential problem, uh, on the horizon with that.
So I had, um, one question I was thinking of when we were talking, um, or hearing everything out. As far as the, how was the, uh, property taxed, um, through the county and then subsequently through the city?
My understanding is, is one, one property at this point.
And that's also with the county as well, as, before we annexed it in?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Rusty? Alright, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up. We're gonna do public comment after the applicant gets speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Scott Peters, professional address of eleven hundred Peachtree Street, and I represent CMS Custom Homes. With me this evening, um, is Mr. David Sutherland and Mr. Reggie Lopes of CMS Custom Homes as well, in case you have any questions for them. As you have heard, this is an appeal from the grant of a variance by the License and Variance Board. So on October fourteenth, twenty twenty, consistent with staff's recommendation, the, the License and Variance Board granted by unanimous decision, this request. So what we have here is two circumstances where staff has evaluated this request, reviewed it under your ordinances, reviewed it under the standards under those ordinances, found CMS cus- Custom Homes satisfies those standards and has recommended approval. We then went before the License and Variance Board and had a public hearing. And I believe the minutes for that are in your record, but just for clarity, I'd like to tender them into the record. And at that hearing, we presented the facts, we presented the history, we presented the law and that board, by unanimous decision, voted to approve that. That board considered the facts under the standards and concluded that CMS Custom Homes, under your own law, is entitled to the, this variance request. Develop these lots consistent with every abutting lot that exists in this neighborhood. So we are here tonight asking, uh, because this is a de novo review under your, uh, ordinance, that you also review the materials, review the facts, review the law, and we believe, under those standards, you are required to grant the variance based upon the legal standards contained within your ordinance. Now, as Rusty pointed out, the history of this property is clear. In nineteen fifty-one, the property was originally subdivided as part of the FM Collier subdivision and it was subdivided and plotted as lots eleven and twelve. Since that plating, every deed conveying the property has referred to the property as lots eleven and twelve. And Mr. Gold, uh, Gould, just to clarify, the house that was constructed on the property was one hundred percent within lot twelve. The house itself did not straddle the property line. The pool was on lot eleven, there was an accessory structure admittedly that did straddle it, but there's a question of whether that was ever even permitted. Now, if we go through the process, that plat that was originally created in nineteen fifty-one actually went back to the, got approved a second time and recorded a second time in nineteen fifty-three. The reason that occurred is it went before the Cobb County Planning Commission. The Cobb County Planning Commission reviewed that plat, approved it and signed off on it and that exact same plat was rerecorded. So nothing was changed between those two plats. Now, if you look at that plat, it only encompasses fifteen lots. Ten of those lots were on Memory Lane and five of those lots were on Northview. Of the lots on Memory Lane, four of them, which are the two lots at issue, lots eleven and twelve, and lots ten and nine, the adjoining lots Rusty mentioned, were all less than twenty thousand square feet when originally plotted. So the property was ultimately annexed by the City of Smyrna in two thousand and one. And as the discussion was, was had, at that time, it was zoned R twenty under your ordinances. Now importantly to understand at that time is, under your ordinances, a substandard lot of record could still be constructed upon. So at that time, even though the lots were brought in as R twenty and they were below twenty thousand square feet, because they had been previously plotted, they could have been developed upon as separate lots. However, that changed in two thousand and seven, when Smyrna adopted section twelve oh eight of your ordinance, which at that time provided that any substandard lot of record, in order to build a new structure, had to get a variance. And that section contemplates the variance procedure. So again, while there was a re- rezoning request that was filed earlier, I was not involved in that process, but as Rusty indicated, there was some discussion, what is the best way to do this? And the discussion was, well, we can go the, the rezoning process, that has the most public participation. And that was what was done. However, that was not done because they were not substandard lots of record. The evidence is clear, these are two historical, recorded, substandard lots of record. There is nothing in the record, anywhere, that shows the lots have ever been replatted or that they've been combined. And in fact, under section si- four oh six of your ordinances, to combine the lots, that subdivision plat or combination plat would have to come before you to be approved. So there's no question since two thousand and one, there is nothing that could have happened that would have combined these lots because that would've been illegal under your own ordinances. So, and a waiver of the rights that the property owner had in these two lots of record has to be by affirmative action. Now, the issue has been raised about the, the tax bill from Cobb County. There is nothing of record that reflects that was done at the request of the property owner, that the lots were combined at the request of the property owner. In all likelihood, because the lots since nineteen fifty-three have been owned by the same property owner, it was just easier for the county to send one tax bill because one property owner owned those two lots. But there is nothing that combined those two lots. Today, we, if we look at things today, there's no question they would've remained two, two tax bills because the tax bills are tied to your GIS system. Right, so when a plat comes in, you approve a plat, that gets sent over to the GIS, they parcel the property, they send that over to the tax assessor and the tax assessor issues the bills based upon those platted GIS lots. GIS was not even a dream in nineteen fifty-one or nineteen fifty-three. So the simple issue is, there's nothing of record that reflects there was an intent to abandon those lots of record and there are numerous deeds after that time that conveyed it as lots eleven and twelve, which is, again, a reaffirmation of the intent to maintain those lots as they were originally plotted. Now... I'm sharing with you a map that we generated from the Smyrna GIS system. And I'll, I'll give the clerk an opportunity to hand those out. And if I could draw your attention to sort of the, uh, middle left of that map, you'll see fourteen sixty and fourteen seventy Memory Lane, the property at issue. And it's reflected admittedly on your GIS system as one, one lot. However, if you look, every lot that I have a red asterix on, which includes the two adjoining lots on Memory Lane, every lot behind the property on Collier Drive and the lots to the east on Collier Drive, as well as a lot, uh, across Collier to the south, those are all R twenty lots that are less than twenty thousand square feet, according to your GIS system. So as you can see, the vast majority of the lots here are less than twenty thousand square feet. Most of them, less than the nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-three square feet, which is the smaller of the two lots, which is lot twelve that we are here discussing tonight. In addition, if you look along Northview on the left, those lots are all zoned R fifteen. Most all those lots are, again, similar size, ni- more than nineteen thousand square feet, but less than, say, nineteen thousand seven hundred square feet. All of those lots are, are below twenty thousand square feet and that continues up north on Northview beyond the edge of this map. So Councilman Wagner, as you pointed out, those lots were actually zoned R fifteen by the city, reflecting a smaller lot size at some point. However, for some reason, the ones on Memory Lane were not. Even though they are consistently below nineteen, twenty thousand square feet. The request here this evening is exactly what all of these neighbors have. A lot which is less than twenty thousand square feet, but is zoned R twenty. Now, the issue before you is not a political question, it's not a popularity contest. It is a quasi judicial process. You are sitting effectively as judges tonight, not as politicians. And it is your job, under the ordinance, to weigh the facts and weigh the sta- under the standards set forth in your ordinance. And as Rusty walked through those standards, I think it is clear that the properties satisfy those requirements. First, whether unique and special circumstances or extraordinary and exceptional conditions applying to the property in question that do not apply generally to other properties in the same district. Here, we have a series of R twenty lots that are below twenty thousand square feet. If in two thousand and one, when the property was annexed, it was zoned R fifteen, we would not be here before you this evening because we have established, to the satisfaction of staff, that we are substandard lots of record. It is solely the issue of less than twenty thousand square feet why we are here before you this evening. And we are not seeking to reduce it below what existed since nineteen fifty-one. The issue that has arisen is because when the property was originally subdivided, it could have been developed, as all these other lots were developed, below twenty thousand square feet. But due to changes in law, that is now an issue and why we're here before you. Secondly, whether the alleged hardship is self-created by any person having an interest in the property, nor is the result of mere disregard or ignorance of the provisions of the relief sought. Again, no. When this was done, these lots were legal, buildable lots. It is due to changes in law that this has occurred. Third, where the strict application of the relevant provisions of the zoning code would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the property for which the variance is sought. As Rusty pointed out, yes. These are two substandard lots of record. Strictly applying the twenty thousand square foot requirement would deprive the ability to use that second lot. We would also point out, what it would result in is one large massive house, completely inconsistent with the remaining neighborhood being forced to be constructed, which is not a reasonable use of the property. And I will have more on that later. And then finally, whether the variance proposed is the minimum that addresses the situation here exactly. We are asking for nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-three square feet as the minimum lot size. We are not seeking setback variances, we are not seeking any other variance. We just want the variance that reflects the nineteen fifty-one plat. So I would also point out that the density, as noted by staff, is two point two units per acre. That is what we are requesting. At twenty thousand square foot lots, if you're just counting the lots, which is what is occurring here, we're just looking at the lots, it's not a typical subdivision where you have roads, you're counting, et cetera, that would reduce that density. That, that density would be two point one seven eight units per acre. So we're talking a difference of point zero four two units per acre is the difference between what could be developed based upon this variance request and a standard R twenty lot. This is not a significant change. Now, the other issue I need to raise, because this is an appeal. Excuse me, let me address one other issue quickly. There, at the License and Variance Board hearing, it was discussed by the board itself that these type variances are, I wouldn't say routinely, but are commonly granted by the city, addressing substandard lots of record where they had been plotted. And I have, which I'm gonna tender to the clerk, um, record of eighteen variances over the years that we've gone back, it was through nineteen ninety-seven, for this, variances from this exact provision, from allowing smaller lots than allowed under that designi- designation of the zoning code. And I'll tender that to the clerk. And I would point out, at our hearing last month, there was actually another lot. It was, um, tied to V twenty zero fifty-four, which was in an R fifteen district that was approved at eleven thousand square feet, so nearly a third below the standard. That was approved without objection, without any public comment, without anything. And that was found to satisfy the standards of your... And that was found to satisfy the standards of your code. So, the other issue which I do need to raise is standing. In order for a party to have standing to object to a zoning decision, which the License and Variance Board decision was, they must show some special damage. Just merely being a taxpayer, being a citizen of Smyrna does not apply. There has to be a special damage. And it has to have a substantial interest that, and they have to show damage. Now here, I would also tender... We are tendering an affidavit of Elise Johnson, who is a real estate agent with extensive experience in the city of Smyrna. And she is familiar with the Forest Hills area, is familiar with the subdivision, and is familiar with the area. And basically, I will say that she states that the smaller lots than R-20 is standard in this area, is common, does not have a negative impact on values of properties. That new construction of smaller homes, as I think everyone here knows, are flying off the sails in the city of Smyrna. And that, in her opinion, building two houses on these substandard lots of record would have no negative impact on any property values in the area. And conversely, a single large home constructed on one lot would be out of character and would overpower other existing houses in the neighborhood. Further, in regard to standing, I would point out that a number of the folks who have filed their appeals have either R-15 lots or they themselves have substandard R-20 lots of record. Including, and this is nothing against him personally, just pointing out that he is the adjoining neighbor, the first under the list of appeals, Mr. De Senzo. According to the GIS system, his lot is 19,190 square feet. He adjoins to the south, immediately adjacent. And in fact, recently, I believe last year, constructed an addition onto his house. So the difference being an individual substandard lot of record, as long as the house isn't completely demolished under your ordinances, it can be added to, completely renovated, completely changed. But for a new construction to begin, that is why we're here, needing those issues. So we would submit to you that we meet the standards under the ordinance. We have shown factually, we are entitled to these variances. And we would also show that the two different bodies of the city of Smyrna have considered this, have found that we meet those standards, and we would request your approval. And I'd be happy to address any questions anyone may have.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Gould?
Got a couple. You mentioned tax bills?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware that there is a similar configured lot not too far away from the property talked about today that receives two tax bills? Because the owner has not made that request. And it's shown as, and they have two separate deeds. So you mentioned that the single tax bill, these weren't your words, but don't indicate a desire by the former owner to consolidate the lot. So I just mentioned that to the council, that they know there is another way to do it, and there are other lots in the area that do have one owner, one house straddling the property line, and two separate tax bills.
And I do not know the specifics of that. I have not seen those tax bills, and I have not researched the history of that. But my assumption would be that if you go back through the history, those lots may have been combined with a house straddling them at some point later in time, once a GIS may have existed or what have you. You mentioned that there were two separate deeds. Certainly, if someone bought from two different owners and then combined them, that would be a different factual situation. So I just don't know the facts, so I can't address them directly.
Right, but I just pointed out that you indicated that one tax bill does not indicate the intent of the owner.
Correct.
My point is perhaps that it did.
Okay.
Question for Scott regarding the points about standing. Was the appeal filed correctly?
Yeah, the appeal was filed correctly. One of the adjoining landowners is one of the appellant also.
Does it, do we have anything in the code around, does it matter what zoning classification the person who appealed lives on? Does it matter if it's R-15 or R-20 or anything else?
No, the position we've taken is on an appeal from the panel that decided this before, that will use the same rule that courts use on appeals, the aggrieved citizen test is a test. And so once the appeal, once someone with standing files the appeal, then it's de novo, meaning that it's just a brand-new appeal, you guys to hear from scratch.
Okay, so the fact that the adjoining resident had a variance earlier this year does not affect the right to appeal this variance?
Well, that's an interesting question. It doesn't affect the ability to appeal, but you all may consider the fact, the facts associated with that resident, that lot size of that resident and that sort of thing, in going through the standards that you are reviewing. You're reviewing this application in the context of these four standards. And so if, what you're saying, if that has any impact on how you review this within those standards, then it's...
Only, my question was only to Mr. Roberts's point regarding standing, the fact that somebody lives on a smaller lot, a lot of R-15, I think is what you said. Or, I'm sorry, an R-20 substandard lot, do they have the right to appeal?
Well, I haven't had to pass on that because once someone that clearly had the right to appeal, which in this case was the abutting property owner, then we didn't have to look at the other issues as to the right to appeal and as to the merits, you know, then that's a completely different issue.
Right, okay, yeah, thanks. And then just one last thing, Mr. Roberts. You mentioned, and neighbors have asked me this question, so that's why I bring it up, that if one house built on two lots would be out of character with the neighborhood. You know, I think there's, if you look on Memory Lane down the street, and thank you for the drawing, because you can see Lot 1511 on the corner of Memory Lane and Collier. I'm not...
Yes, sir.
I don't know the square footage there, but it looks larger than the lot in question. And that's one house that's in keeping with the neighborhood, and is probably a suitable use for that property. So you just mentioned that the one house on this corner would be out of character, and I just point that out to you that perhaps it wouldn't be.
And I think in response to that, with all due respect, Councilman, is that that is on the corner of the main road coming in. That is a busier road there. As you get back in further, closer to our lots, you are looking at every single lot around it is smaller. Across the street from the larger house you mentioned, I believe that is a church across the street. It is a different use, it is a different character. So I would submit to you that, yes, that is there, it exists. I'm not arguing that fact, but I believe from a, if you look everywhere around these two properties, every single house is on a lot smaller than 20,000 square feet. And to put a single house on one lot that is 39,000, over 39,000 square feet, I would submit to you would be out of character if a new style construction is put in there. That would be my, and if I could quickly, on the standing issue, yes, the city attorney passed on that as indicating that they believe someone meant standing. Obviously, I have to raise that in the event this goes any further before you. And I would point out that in order for a citizen to be damaged, I would question how someone can be damaged when their neighbor gets to do the exact same thing they are doing.
It's not exactly the same thing.
It may not be exactly the same, but I believe it is hard to argue that when your neighbor asks to have the exact same thing you have, somehow your property is put down in value. Because the logical conclusion of that would be what you do detracts from others. That would be my point, just to raise the issue.
Okay. Just a few other things. The neighbor asked me, is there anything different in the design or the layout of elevations that you're presenting today than what we saw back in February?
No, sir, those are the same.
So same tree plan, same landscape offer, nothing's different?
Correct. We have, on occasion, with certain representatives, offered to engage in discussions and have not been taken up on those requests, so...
And then, when your folks, your client purchased the property, do they think they had a question at all about if it was one lot or two lots?
In researching the real estate records, they found the 1950s plats. They found no modification of those plats. And they saw deeds that consistently referenced lots 11 and 12, two separate lots within the FM Collier subdivision. And as such, believed they were acquiring two separate legally developable lots.
So the fact that there was at least an accessory structure, you know, if not more, in the pool, straddling on both properties, which in practice has consolidated that into one lot. I'm not a legal fellow, so I don't know if that's the right term, but reasonable to think that a lot of folks would see that as one lot, and even perhaps legally see it as one lot.
Again, I think the facts are clear. The house itself was 100% contained within Lot 12. The pool was 100% contained within Lot 11. And there was a shed that did straddle the property line, but it was not what we would consider a substantial structure. And as such, we did not see, or my clients at that time did not see anything of record that would reflect an intent to abandon that existing substandard, those existing subdivided lots.
Did your client consider buying the property on contingency? Contingence on zoning or the variance?
No, sir. My understanding is, no, I did not represent them at that time, but no.
I think they're probably pretty savvy developers, right? And imagine that's probably a pretty common practice before you buy a piece of property that's not zoned the way you want it to be, or not certain that you'd buy it on contingency.
I think the difference here being, yes, when you're buying larger tracts that you're coming in and wanting to ask to go from R-20 to R-8, certainly, we would acknowledge that the standard practice is, you know, a lot of times, and sellers anticipate that it would be subject to a contingency of rezoning. Here, the difference being was acquiring the property from an individual who lived there and was not interested in contingencies, but just either wanted to sell the property or not sell the property. And so, obviously, if you have a seller who's not willing to entertain that, then you have a choice to either buy the property or not buy the property, and then go through the process. But again, when it was acquired based upon the legal record, it appeared clear that there were two subdivided lots of record.
Right, so she probably didn't want to take the time or the potential risk of it not panning out the way the developer wanted to. So they took the risk on themselves to buy it and then go through the process later on.
I believe that's probably a fair characterization, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. Any other questions from counsel? I'd ask that you address the applicant as Mr. Peters, not Mr. Roberts, because it's Mr. Peters, not Mr. Roberts.
Did I do that? So sorry.
It's quite all right. I've been called a lot worse, so it's all right.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, thank you. You'd be right in saying that somebody who owned multiple pieces of property could decide to build a single home or to use all pieces of that property. Both of those would be reasonable uses of the property. They own three lots. They could build a home on one property and leave the other two empty, or build a pool on the other lot.
Certainly.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're a single property, legally speaking?
Correct.
And does a tax bill mean that it would be a single property, legally speaking?
No, sir. The tax commissioner has no, or the tax assessor has no ability to change the legal status of a lot.
And the deed that the current owners have, does it define it as two lots?
Yes, sir, it does.
All right, that's all.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
This is a public hearing. I'd ask that anyone who wants to speak for or against this item, please step forward and be sworn in by our city attorney, Scott Cochran. Even if you think you want to say something, come on forward and everybody be sworn in all at once, please. Thank you. And Heather, I believe we have someone who wants to speak remotely. And I'd like to recognize them first, please.
Yes.
Okay, if you'll give your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Weifel, and I live at 3289 Lee Street in Forest Hills. I'm about a quarter mile from the Memory Lane property, and I can see some of the property's treetops from my house. I am in support of the variance and believe that the appeal should be denied for two reasons. First, two smaller property lots with two smaller houses are more in line with the character of the neighborhood. As the overhead visuals with property lines clearly show, the surrounding properties all have very similar dimensions, except for this one corner lot. It is out of place, an anomaly. Dividing the lot makes the site more in line with the neighborhood not left. Furthermore, if the variance is denied, the developer will build an enormous mega mansion over 4,000 square feet. Again, this type of home is not in the character of the neighborhood. The variance allows the developer to build two smaller homes that match the character of the surrounding homes. The second reason I support the variance is it's better for the trees. The variance requires the developer to follow special stipulations, some of which were negotiated with Forest Hills residents, including myself. One of these stipulations is that the developer will plant more trees and vegetation at the back of the two properties. This means that the developer will go above and beyond what is required of him in the Smyrna tree ordinance. If the variance is denied, the developer does not have to follow these stipulations and can do whatever he wants within the constraints of the tree ordinance. Additionally, because of the setback requirements for two houses on two separate properties, there will be more green space and more trees saved than if a mega mansion is built on one property. This was clearly explained by both the developer and the landscaped architect for the property, who I'll mention helped write Smyrna's tree ordinance. Thus, the variance is better for the tree canopy in Forest Hills. Finally, let's remember that this council is deciding whether to interfere with both the rights of an individual property owner and whether to interfere in the free market. I believe the government should show restraint in such matters unless there is a clear, undeniable reason why such an intrusion is in the public interest or that it's preventing harm to the surrounding neighbors. the surrounding neighbors. The appellants in this matter have given no substantial reason why two houses on two separate lots will harm them or their properties. Let's not subvert individual rights without a very good reason. In sum, I would have liked nothing more than if the buyer had renovated the old house on this site and decided to keep all of the trees on the property. But that is not going to happen, and it is not the choice we have before us. The choice is either two smaller homes on two regular-sized lots, or one gigantic home on one oversized lot. For preserving the character of our neighborhood and saving more of our tree canopy, the first option is the best one we have. I urge the council to reject this appeal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us remotely. I have four people signed up, so we'll, we'll go with them first, and then I'll invite anybody else who'd like to speak, who was sworn in to come up. The first one is Mr. Charlie Bonds, 3150 Northview Place.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity. I don't know about anybody else, but I thought the, the caller was quite odd. But anyway, I'm a Smyrna native, resident of Forest Hills since 2007. I think at the root of this, we're still looking at a property that has been utilized for over 60 years as one lot, has been utilized with one owner, with one home, and one tax bill. Whether we look at this from the perspective of a variance or rezoning, that fact still doesn't change. The city has made two prior decisions rejecting that, and I would ask that you uphold the character of our Forest Hills and, and reject this again, and protect the residents. I think while we look at what's in or out of character for the neighborhood, I mean, we've got a good mix of 50s brick ranches with some tasteful remodels and some very large new builds. In the past 18 months or so, there have been at least seven homes built and sold for a million dollars, or over a million dollars, and the highest price, price point at which was 1.4. So the applicant's argument that you can't build or sell a large home on a lot this size doesn't hold water to me. But again, I would just ask that you uphold prior decisions from the city and, and support these residents. Thank you.
Thank you. It's bounds, not bonds, sorry about that. Next, we have Stacy Mason, 3184, 3184 Northview Place.
Hey, good evening. My name is Stacy Mason, and as you stated, I'm at 3184 Northview Place, directly across the properties in question. I would have to say that the caller is a little bit exaggerating that he can see the house and the lot in question. That's just not true. And that the homes that are being proposed are much larger than he was insinuating as well. This situation that's being described tonight may fit in other areas of Smyrna, but it does not fit in Forest Hills. They are proposing two very large homes in the area. Our fear is that if you allow this, it's going to not only overwhelm and dominate the existing homes, but it will set a clear precedence and a message to other builders that Smyrna allows multiple homes on single lots. This has been viewed as a single lot for over 67 years with home, with one home, and this is when we bought our property over six years ago. These standards must be upheld, and our unique neighborhood and character of Forest Hills must be protected, and we really hope that you will consider that tonight. That is, after all, what attracted all of us to Forest Hills in the first place. And I think we have over 10 families in the direct area on Memory Lane and Northview Place represented here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Keith Watson, 3174 Northview Place. Doing a great job, Penny. Thank you.
Good evening. As you said, I live on 3174 Northview Place. I am catty corner to the property of Ann and Steve Melton that was purchased by the applicants. I've lived there with my wife Heather and my family for 25 years. We've seen a lot of change in the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, the applicant's neighborhood at the front of our neighborhood, when we moved in, was a piece of property with a single house, just like you see the Reed House. We watched that come in and get developed, and, and a beautiful neighborhood get put in place. The change that we've seen continues, as Charlie was saying, you know, we're seeing homes now being put into the neighborhood that are selling for over a million dollars each. The values that have, the values of the homes in the neighborhood have continually increased since we moved there in 1996, and it's, you know, it's obvious why somebody would want to come in and improve the neighborhood. I can tell you, my wife and I have been very supportive of that. As Charlie described, some of the tasteful renovations that have been put in place, some of the new homes even that have been built in the neighborhood, we are for it. The thing that I think we would ask you to consider on the city council is the impact that these types of, well, this type specifically of development has on us as individuals, as people. Let's take the, the politics out of it, let's take the business aspect out of it that the applicants are here for. You know, I, I know in some of the other meetings, it's been said that, you know, I, I think Mr. the, the developer, or the applicant stated in the hearing for the variance that he's not a developer looking to make a quick buck, and I think that's an exact quote, you can look at it in the minutes. And, and listen, at the end of the day, the applicant's here to make money. I mean, let's just be clear about that. And you know what? This is America. There's nothing wrong with making money. But to say that they want to do what's best for the community when they're not actually part of our community, I know they're part of the Smyrna community, they do live in Smyrna, to me, it's just a bit disingenuous. I've lived in the neighborhood, as I said, for 25 years. I've never met any of the applicants or anybody associated with them until such time as their first zoning request was denied by you on the city council. To me, that speaks volumes. You know, Mr. Peters, not Mr. Roberts, Mr. Peters, stated just a bit ago that there have been overtures made to some of the people, some of the representatives, which I'm not sure what that actually means, what a representative would be defined as in, in his, from his statement, but I, I can tell you that, well, he said that they were reached out to, to try to talk about these types of things, maybe negotiate. I can tell you, I've lived there for 25 years, I've been there ever since this thing came up. No one's ever contacted me, no one's ever asked to speak to me, no one asked, even in the beginning, about my opinion, or my wife's opinion, or my three children, who've been born and raised there for the last 19 and a half years. Again, that speaks volumes to me. So I, I just would ask you that you consider kind of that type of, well, to, to consider that as part of this. A couple of other things that I just wanted to comment on that I heard Mr. Peters speaking about. You know, he referenced the structure that was on the property line, and as I said, being there as long as I was, I was very close friends with Ann and Steve, spent time at their house, spent time at their pool, and I think he referenced, you know, on a couple of occasions, I may get this not exactly right, but, you know, that this was some type of shed, or that it was not a permanent structure. I can assure you that it was a permanent structure. There was a, a carport that was, what you could, I guess, be considered a shed. It had some poles and it had corrugated roofing for that. But next to that, there was a cinder block building, which I would call kind of a workshop or, yeah, a workshop, and it was a permanent building with a roof, and before they demolished it, that's exactly what it was. So it was not a shed, as they described it. The, the other thing that I would say is, you know, we keep hearing this, the gentleman on the phone talking about a mega mansion, and we keep hearing these things about keeping the new development in the characteristic of what all the other houses are. The houses that they want to put on these lots are not characteristic of Memory Lane or Northview Place. They're not. If we want to use the term mega mansion, I, I would venture to say that I would consider those mega mansions. They're substantially larger than my home, substantially larger than many of the, almost all of the other homes on our streets. And, you know, if there was something that I could ask of them, and if they would do it, I, I would be very happy is to reconsider the size and make them more like the characteristics of the existing homes. But again, no, no one's approached me, no one's asked to talk to me about it, to get my opinion, again, prior to the zoning meeting the first time, never had heard of these people before, so.
Mr. Watson, we're, we're at five minutes. I'll give you a little more time if you'd like.
Nope, that, that, I, I'll summarize it, you know, just, you know, for those of us who live on Northview and live on Memory Lane, this is our life. We live here. We've invested our time, our talent, and our treasure into our homes, into the neighborhood, and into our neighbors. We don't want to see that ruined by a development, not another homeowner improving, not another homeowner looking to add and put something nice, somebody coming in to make money, which is fine. I said that, it's no problem. We would just ask that you consider that this is a neighborhood, this is a community, and it is being disrupted by this proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Terry, 3480 Pine Tree Drive.
Good evening. Heather's handing you some information that I brought for you to look at, and I apologize, Mr. Bennett, I forgot to prepare one for you. If you want to look on with Susan or the mayor, I'm sure they won't mind. And I apologize for the bright yellow color, you'll just have to think of that as John Quill yellow, because that's all I could find. What you're going to find when you open this is the first picture, the color picture that you see there, this is the lot. I know some of you have been out and have seen it and have driven through the neighborhood. Some of you, I find out, have, have just not been able to do that. So I wanted you to see the property. This is it. And Memory Lane is in the foreground, Northview's in the background. It's a corner lot, you can see how it lays lots of pretty shade trees. It's a beautiful lot. And the reason I put this first in here is because if you stand right there, and that's where the house used to stand before they demolished it, if you stand right there and you do this, you do a 360 and you look around, turn the page over, and start looking at these other pictures of the houses, this is the neighborhood we're talking about. Notice that they're all brick, notice that they're all ranch, some have basements, some do not. Notice the beautiful landscaping, notice the, the improvements that have been made to many of these houses. And the thing to keep in mind about these photos, these are the, in fact, there's 12 here, I actually missed one of the houses. There's actually 13 houses that you walk out on the front porch of these houses and you're looking directly at this lot. As opposed to what they were telling you earlier, there are 13 homeowners, most of whom are here tonight. This is what they'll be looking at, and these are their houses. If you flip on over, there's been a lot of talk tonight about whether this is one property or whether it's two, one parcel or whether it's two. There is so much evidence supporting the fact that this has been one property since 1953. I wouldn't know where to begin. The first thing you see there is a tax notice from 2017. I went back much farther than this. It's always been described as one parcel number, and that's the key. The county assigned that, not the people who laid it out, not the, the Collier family who owned it all these years. It's one parcel number, and the name on here is, is Ann Melton, she's the owner. Look at the lot, the map that's shown on the opposite page, I got that from Cobb County. This is sort of the thousand-foot view. The yellow circled in the middle, this is the property we're talking about, on the corner of Memory and Northview. And yes, it's a pretty good-sized piece of property, but if you look around, look and see how many others are that size. They want you to think that we're only talking about a few lots that are much smaller, that are close by, or perhaps adjoining, but there are lots of properties in this very area, and if you back up even farther, there are many large properties. Many people back in the 50s from the Colliers, many people bought two lots and they consolidated them. If you ask Cobb County, what, what is it that makes two lots consolidated into one, they will say, when you put a house on it, this is what they told me, you put a house on it or other structures, if you're at the lot line or over it for the two lots, it's consolidating. This has been one property for 66 years. The county acknowledges that, your staff acknowledges that. They even put that in the memo that they sent to each of you, which you have. It says one property. So that's, that's all the evidence we need for that. The last page, if you flip over, says to be filed with Cobb County. This is required by our Cobb County government. It has the name on it of David Sutherland. David was the, the buyer of this property. When David filed this with Cobb County, he was simply telling them, I am buying this property. It's dated October the 18th, they closed on the 23rd. So this was just prior to the closing, and it says, what are you buying? One parcel. There's the parcel number right there, same parcel number that's on all the other documents. The next thing that I have there is a letter that I got from Ann Melton. Ann is the lady who's owned this property with two husbands, her first husband died, and she remarried, but this, her name has been on the property for all this time, 66 years. She sent me this letter. She called, I called her, she called me back, and I said, Ann, just tell me the story. I want to know. Tell me about owning this property, living there, how long were you there? Was it one, was it two? She went through the whole story, and here it is, laid out in her own words. I'm not going to try to read it to you, but it verifies what you've heard some of these people say here tonight. She said, Mike, it was always one property. Her father-in-law is the one who bought it and gave it to Ann and their son, her husband, and it was consolidated at that point. So it's always been one, there's no question about it. The thing about this that broke my heart is when she came back to pick up some things at the house, and the house had been demolished, less than 30 days after closing, they bulldozed the house. She came back to pick up a few things in the yard, some yard art, things like that, and she said, Mike, my house was gone. I said, Ann, what did you do? She said, I sat there and I cried. Now, that's what happened to the property, and this is her own words, and so you have that. Now, flip over to the next page, and I have what I call a summary. I do want to run through this if I can. The property was planted as two lots in, actually in 1950, but it was consolidated into one parcel by the Meltons in 53. Now, there was talk here about what did they do? They built a home, they also built a, they called it a garage, it was more like a carport, they had a storage shed, they had a structure where they did ceramics. They actually produced and sold ceramics out of there. They built a large deck, they bought a, built a large platform that went down to their pool, and they put a swimming pool in. All of that combined was in the middle of the property, and that's what their taxes were based on, and that's what consolidated it into one. The applicant now wants to turn back the clock, they've told us that. They want to revert back to a 1950 plat and ignore the fact that it was consolidated, and they want to put two houses there. Now, keep this in mind, in 1950, when this was first planted by the Collier family, the family that has the road, Collier Drive, named after them, those plats were designed for 1,200 to 1,500 square foot homes. These folks are talking about putting in houses well in excess of 5,000 square feet. By our calculation, one's about 5,700, one's about 5,300 square feet. So when one of my neighbors stands up here and tells you, these are really big houses, they are, and they're out of character with those pictures that you just saw of the neighborhood. Let's go down to the hardship issue. That's a really interesting one. I know you're bored to tears by now with all of this legal stuff, but a variance does actually require that a hardship be proven, and the applicant's attorney has stated that their hardship is that they would be deprived of a reasonable use of the property if you don't let them put two houses here. Now, does that make sense to you? We're not depriving them of a reasonable use of the property. They can put one nice house here, they can sell it, million-dollar-plus home sale in our neighborhood every month, every month. So that's, that's just not reasonable. That's pretty much it. We, we're talking one lot, no hardship that we can identify, already been ruled on by the council and by P and Z, and it appears that the license and various board base their decision on either missing, misleading, or incorrect information. Now, I'm not slamming, not slamming them, I think they did an incredible job, but they admitted, and Roy Akry even said when he started summarizing that whole process for them, he said Rusty, he was talking to Rusty, this is not a zoning case. He said, no, sir, it's not. He said, this is not like any variance we've ever heard. He said, no, sir, it's not. It was really unusual, and now it's wound up- it's not." It was really unusual, and now it's wound up back here. I'm like one of the other folks that spoke, and like the question that Susan raised and that Tim raised, I wonder about this, because are we going to allow people who are turned down by council to then go to the license and variance board and get to do what they wanted to do to begin with? I find something a little off about that. You might want to take a look. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Is there anybody, I don't have anybody else signed up to speak, but I did see some others come forward. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against this? Anybody? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this, and I will turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, if I got a couple of questions based on one of the points the, one of the callers made. The first caller talked about the stipulations that were discussed back in February. Would those still apply to this variance?
No, we didn't carry them over, because those are, those apply to conditional zonings, which were, were what we were doing at that point.
Okay. So the, so the items that he mentioned, the tree plan, landscape buffer, whatever else was discussed in that.
They'll, they'll have to meet the requirements of the tree ordinance.
Right.
But the zoning ordinance does not require a buffer between R-20 properties, similarly zone properties that are residential, do not require a buffer between them. But the, they will be required to provide, when they come in for permitting, if they come into permitting, a full tree plan. So, you know, if there are existing trees on site that they can save, it, it benefits them because they don't have to replant. And, you know, whatever they save counts towards the density that's required for the site. And then, you know, the more that they save, it is, is, is better for them. They don't have to replant. They don't have to recompense back to the tree bank.
Right. So they'll follow, they'll follow all the normal codes and building requirements and such. Okay, thank you.
Rusty, I have a question, because I think I heard a lot about this as well, about the size of the home that the applicant would build on this lot. It would be so much bigger. But they're not required to build to the setback lines?
No.
Or they, they could build within that? Okay. And then, the other thing, I guess I'm looking at this, when they, you know, with the two homes, these homes on, on Northview would be facing the side of that, of the home, and I guess I just, you know, I'm just kind of wondering too, because, you know, when lots like this are on the corner, and then they, you know, many times they want to put a fence on, in their property to have their, you know, pri, privacy. So will these other hu, I guess that, will that be allowed and to the, to a side setback line? And would, and what would that fence height be and that the other homes would be facing? I'm just kind of curious.
Hey, and before you answer, Rusty, can I just chime in for a second?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so this is a variance, and the only issue before you all is the issue related to the variance, and that is the lot size, right? So the home size, the fence height, the, all that is, is, is not an issue now. There's no, there's nothing before you all except the variance as to the lot size. If the, if the, if this gets hijacked, you know, that, that, that just makes it hard.
Okay.
The next stage, you know, we're going to have to defend this at some point, potentially so.
My recommendation would be to ask the applicant exactly what they plan for as far as floor area, what the exterior composition of the homes are on the corner, and if they plan for any fencing or whatnot, so you fully understand. But as Scott said, that, you know.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I mean, once again, I mean, from what I understand, all of the, the developmental requirements will be there. Regar, you know, if, 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 whenever, whatever's built there is built, whatever ordinance that we have in place will apply then. And if they, they would have to come in for a variance from those otherwise.
So that's, for that corner lot, it's going to be, their front setback will be off of Memory Lane, will be thirty-five feet from Memory Lane. The plat shows the house location, and it's basically on the setback lines. From Northview Place, it'll be twenty-three-point-three feet, because our ordinance allows for, for street-side setbacks to be twenty, twenty, or two-thirds of the front setback. And then, the other side will be twelve feet from the property line, and then thirty feet from the rear. They would be allowed to have a maximum height of thirty-five feet, and we measure that from the average grade on all four sides to the midpoint between the eaves and a ridge on a slope roof on the, on the highest portion that they have. And then they would be allowed a maximum coverage of thirty-five percent on the lot. So that includes the house, the driveway, walkways, any surface that, that doesn't allow infiltration. Those requirements that I stated are applicable to all the other R-20 zonings in there. So they're not, they're not asking for anything different than what's allowed for other, that the other homeowners surrounding them would, would be granted today. The Lot Eleven, he's got it, he's got that house pulled all the way to the east, and it's on the eastern side of the property. It's on the setback at twelve feet from that property line. The front is thirty-five feet as well, and then he has, he's way off the twelve-foot setback, because he's got a side entry garage on that side. So he, he's a good way off, good ways off that setback, and it would have a thirty-five, thirty-foot rear setback as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After hearing all the evidence tonight from the input from Mr. Peters, Rusty and staff, and Scott Cochran, and of course, public input, I'm going to make the motion to deny the variance request based on the decision factor around hardship.
Have a motion to deny the variance request? Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor?
Could we get some clarification on this? If, if we vote to deny this, we are not allowing for the homes to be built.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct. All right. So I have a motion to deny this variance and a second. All those in favor of this motion to deny, please vote. All those opposed? Okay, that motion is defeated four to three. Now, we move to a counter motion to approve is in the posture that we're in now. Do I have a motion to approve? So moves. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Wagner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved four, zero, or four to three, I'm sorry, four to three. Okay. We will be moving on. Item E is ordinance twenty-twenty dash sixteen, public hearing, review of proposed ordinance twenty-twenty dash sixteen for code amendments to sections four oh-two and seven fourteen to the city's zoning ordinance. Are proposed to add a definition related to outdoor recreational facility and to list outdoor recreational facility as a permitted use within the Light Industrial Zoning District. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development was approached by a property at fifty-three-fifty Oakdale Road with regards to constructing an outdoor volleyball training facility. The subject property is owned Light Industrial and is currently occupied by a building with indoor volleyball courts. The Light Industrial Zoning District was amended in twenty-twelve to allow indoor recreational facilities. Community Development is proposing a text amendment to allow outdoor recreational facilities as a permitted use under the L.I. zoning district. Community Development recognizes that many of the city's industrial areas are surrounded by residential areas, and there's a potential for negative impact on those residential areas. To mitigate these potential impacts, Community Development is recommending outdoor recreational facilities be screened when adjacent to residential property. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of six, zero at the October twelfth, twenty-twenty meeting. Staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty-twenty dash sixteen for code amendments to sections four oh-two and seven fourteen to the city's zoning ordinance. Are proposed to add a definition related to outdoor recreational facility and to list outdoor recreational facility as a permitted use within the Light Industrial Zoning District. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed amendment above.
We'll turn it over to Joey.
Thank you. This is a text amendment to our Light Industrial permitted uses. We're looking to amend section seven-one, four-point-two-three to allow indoor and outdoor recreational facilities and to add a provision that outdoor recreational facilities shall be screened when adjacent to residential property. We're also proposing and adding a definition for outdoor recreational facility. We've modeled this after Cobb County, and that reads as follows, "Outdoor recreational facility means an outside area designed and equipped for the conduct of sports and leisure, leisure time activities other than tennis courts or golf courses, which includes but is not limited to baseball, basketball, softball, volleyball, soccer, football, and lacrosse." Again, this is consistent with Cobb County, and we are recommending approval.
All right. Any discussion on this item?
I have a question. Is there any time limit specified in this ordinance as is proposed?
We have not proposed a time limit.
When you say time limit, are you speaking about hours of operation?
Is there any, I mean, at, at ten o'clock at night, are we requiring that the facilities be shut down?
I mean, they'd be subject to our noise ordinance.
And I, I'm, I'm going to go back a few years to a situation that I had where simply kids were playing basketball using car lights to light up the basketball court. I had a location over off South Cobb Drive, and I had complaints from the residents. Now, this was across the street from a residential neighborhood, but that's my only concern is, you know, if somebody is even, you know, two, three hundred feet from this location and someone's out playing basketball at eleven o'clock at night, and they're, they're going to cause some problems. Could, would there be some consideration maybe for putting a time limit on it?
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
That was what Councilman Welch brought up was my concern as well, you know, with the, with the, with something like basketball and, and the, you know, how, what kind of, what would that cause? And, and, you know, if it's near residential and the noise associated with that.
All right. Mr. Wheaton, if you'll handle this issue, please, and with your motion, you may want to consider adding a time limit or some other consideration as proposed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, you know, that's a reasonable thought there to consider, you know, adding a reasonable time limit to this. In terms of our normal, you know, operating procedures, normal business or normal parks usage times, I think, you know, if we're consistent with that and putting that language in this, I think that would be a, an important change to add. So with that, I'll make a motion.
Hey, hold on, hold on one second. This is, sorry. Since this is amending the zoning code, we need to call for any input for a public hearing?
Oh, my apologies. Yes. If there's anybody here, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, sorry about that. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go, we'll go back. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, great catch. Thank you so much. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve, let's see, item four E, ordinance twenty-twenty dash one-six, with the modification to, that these are operated, that all of these are operated at normal facility hours stipulated in, in our other guidelines.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven, zero. Thank you. Item five is privileged licenses. Item five A, license twenty-twenty dash one-eight, privileged license request, license twenty-twenty dash one-eight, beer manufacturing and pouring, brewery and retail pouring, thirty-eighty, Jean Quill Drive, Arcanum Ventures LLC, doing business as The Viking Alchemist, with Robin Cosaurus as agent. And did the applicant make it here? My understanding is he was out of town on travel, and our code requires that he be here for this, and so we will entertain a motion to table this until the December seventh meeting of mayor and council. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wagner. It's in his ward.
Sorry, December seventh or?
December seventh is what I was told.
Okay. Just making sure. Yeah, all right. So we move to table this privileged license to December seventh council meeting.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven, zero, and we'll hear that on December seventh. Item five B, license twenty-twenty dash one-nine, privileged license request, license twenty-twenty dash nineteen, wine and liquor retail package, thirty-one-hundred Highlands Parkway Southeast, Suite One, Prohibition Liquor LLC, doing business as Prohibition Liquor with Matthew Bowman as the agent. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you. Application for privileged licenses for Prohibition Liquor LLC, DBA Prohibition Liquor for the sale of wine and liquor retail package. Prohibition Liquor LLC is the owner, and Matthew Bowman is the agent applicant. Matthew Bowman will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at thirty-one-hundred Highlands Parkway Southeast, Suite One. Mr. Bowman has been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal information that would preclude the issuance of this license. Matthew Bowman has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna, ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. Privileged license request, license twenty-twenty dash one-nine, wine and liquor retail package, thirty-one-hundred Highlands Parkway Southeast, Suite One, Prohibition Liquor LLC, doing business as Prohibition Liquor with Matthew Bowman as agent.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward seven, which is Mr. Wheaton, and I'll turn it over to him. I'm sure he'll invite the applicant up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly would love to, to have the applicant come forward, and also Rusty Martin as well, to review some aspects of the proposal.
Try this again. Good evening. How are y'all doing? I'm Matthew Bowman, or otherwise known as First Ron Bowman. I'm in charge of the Atlanta Recruiting Company. I've been in the Army eighteen years. I live in Mapleton right now. The reason why I want to open up a liquor store is because when we first moved here, we were doing a housewarming party. My wife grew local package stores in the area, and it took her to some pretty undesirable places. The Army has taught me, if you, you know, you find, if, once you find a problem, you need to find, you have the responsibility to fix it. I saw that as a need. I'm sure other people in my neighborhood, and from discussions of other people in the neighborhood, they were traveling, you know, on the other side of two eighty-five, five miles in this direction, ten miles in that direction to go to a package store. Again, it was undesirable neighborhoods. So I pretty much have sunk pretty much my whole, I guess, my nest egg, everything, all my savings into this. I want this to be something that I do after retirement. I want to be an owner of a business. I just don't want to sit around. The Army, I think, I just, that's just not the way I'm built. I want to do something. We're looking to actually plant some roots here. We live in Mapleton right now, but we actually have a, a bid in on a house in Smyrna off of Cooper, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. I could talk to soldiers all day long, but this is different. But we have a house that we have an actual bid in right now off of Cooper Lake Drive. So my wife's a NICU nurse at Emery. So my wife's a NICU nurse at Emory, so, I mean, she's followed me my whole career, so it's time that I'm gonna do something for her. Pretty much it.
Great. Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick questions for you, and I appreciate your interest in living here and potentially doing business here as well. I just want to make sure and verify a couple of things related to the operation, that you really understand the consequences of sales to underage individuals in the city.
Yes, sir.
As well, you know, you understand that, you know, the police may come by uniformed or not to make sure that things are operating as they should be in this, in this facility.
Definitely, yes, sir.
Great, great. All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, we did have some, some citizen feedback, and I'd like to invite anybody who would like to speak for or against this to come forward at this time. All right, saying none. Mr. Wheaton.
Just a few quick things. I think Rusty Martin wanted to offer some thoughts as well related to this particular property in this particular location, just for official review.
The City of Smyrna has received this application. We've reviewed it against the standards laid out for the sale of packaged sales of distilled spirits, beer and wine. In our opinion, it meets the, the distance requirements for that from adjoining residences. In addition, the applicant has passed all the background checks as well as done his AVENDI training, which tells you what state law requires as well as local ordinances. So with that, we're recommending approval for you guys.
All right, thanks so much, Mr. Martin. With that review, you know, I think that, I think Mr. Bowman here is has really good intentions bringing forth a really potentially good development to this area, and certainly happy to see Emery as a resident. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item five B license two thousand and twenty dash one nine as previously read.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. Thanks for doing business in Smyrna. Thank you for your service and good luck on your house. Okay. Item six, formal business, six A two thousand and twenty dash four five three, approval of the two thousand and twenty-one mayor and council meeting minutes. And as I understand it, Mr. Bennett, it's the same as it's been in the past with the council and committee of the whole every other Thursday and every other Monday and the same holidays. Is there anything I'm missing?
No, sir.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve item six A? Approved, motion by Mr. Pickens. Do I have a second? Mr. Wagner seconded. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item six B two thousand and twenty dash four seven five, reappointment of George Davis to the Civil Service Board for a two-year term, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Civil Service Board term for George Davis expires on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. The Civil Service Board is comprised of three members, each serving two-year terms. One seat is appointed by the council and is currently held by George Davis. One elected by fire and police personnel, currently Donna Downs, elected on October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, and one appointed by the other two board members, this is currently John Davis. George Davis's term is set to expire November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, but has requested reappointment to the Civil Service Board. Mr. George Davis has served on the Civil Service Board since two thousand and six. Staff recommends reappointment of George Davis to the Civil Service Board for a two-year term to expire November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any discussion? May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item six C two thousand and twenty dash four six two, approval of the renewal of the prisoner housing agreement effective January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one with the City of Marietta and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. As of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Smyrna and the City of Marietta to house their inmates will expire. On October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, the Marietta City Council approved the agreement, which would be in effect from January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Approval of the renewal of the prisoner housing agreement between the City of Smyrna and the City of Marietta and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Gould to handle this item tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of our residents may not know that we have a excellent jail facility, and we do have agreements with other municipalities to house their, house their prisoners. But it's, as Mr. Bennett just said, is a continuation of that, of that agreement, so I moved to approve item six A two thousand and twenty dash four six two as previously read.
It's actually item six C, but we do have a motion to approve item six C, and do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Roberts, I mean, Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. Thank you. Item six D ordinance two thousand and twenty dash seventeen, approval of ordinance two thousand and twenty dash seventeen for an amendment to section six two, six eight three, six eight four, and six one two four of the alcoholic beverage ordinance as it pertains to the issuance of pouring licenses for private clubs and special event facilities and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. The Community Development Department has received requests, requests for alcohol pouring licenses for nonprofit private clubs and special event facilities. Under the city's alcohol beverage ordinance requires pouring licenses to have at least fifty percent of sales derived from the sale of food prepared to be consumed on premises. Both the nonprofit private club and the special event facility cannot meet that requirement. Staff has reviewed the city's alcoholic beverage ordinance and is proposing code amendments to address the issue. Community Development recommends the approval of ordinance two thousand and twenty dash seventeen for an amendment to section six dash two, six dash eighty-three, six dash eighty-four, and six dash one twenty-four of the alcoholic beverage ordinance as it pertains to the issuance of pouring licenses for private clubs and special event facilities and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Turn it over to Rusty Martin.
Good evening. As Mr. Bennett stated, Community Development has received several requests, one from the American Legion, and the other being from the new special event facility on Concorde Road next to the fire, fire station number two. Both, both the requests and the requestees are here, if you have any questions for them. The American Legion was requesting the ability to be classified as a, as a private club, which had specific standards outside of being classified as they currently are as a restaurant, which requires fifty percent food sales and a maximum of alcohol sales being capped at fifty percent. So they, they don't operate as a restaurant. They don't have as much food sales, so they needed some relief from that. Event facilities are sort of in the same manner for pouring licenses. They, this event facility is not going to provide food. They'll have their food catered. Therefore, they can't meet the food sales requirements for a pouring license. So they asked us to look at those requirements, compare them to other municipalities, and see if there's a way that we could address address these issues. So staff looked at the municipalities of Duluth, Sandy Springs, Alpharetta, Roswell, Marietta, Cobb County, and Woodstock. We found that a lot of these municipalities, they, they address private clubs in their ordinance and, as well as special event facilities. Most of the, the ordinance, the ordinances that we saw were, I think they were pretty much a model code because they all pretty much stated the same thing, except for they may have some changes between the number of memberships, the number of members in a, in a organization and, you know, the food versus the rental requirements and stuff like that. I'm gonna walk you through these ordinance amendments, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have. The first amendment would be to six dash two, it'd be to add a definitional, a definition to the ordinance which would provide nonprofit private clubs. It basically says, means a corporation organized and existing under the laws of the state or veterans organization associated with and in part of a recognized national veterans organization which is organized and operates exclusively for pleasure, recreation, and other nonprofit purposes and which is, and which immediately prior to the application for this license hereunder, one, has at least a hundred members regularly paying dues, and two, has a tax-exempt status under the provisions of section five oh one C nineteen of the United States Internal Revenue Code, and three, owns or leases building or space for the reasonable use of its members with suitable kitchen and dining room space and equipment and maintaining and using a sufficient number of servers and employees for cooking, preparing, and serving meals for its memberships and guests. Four, has no membership, no members or officers, agent, or employees of the club receiving compensation directly or indirectly in the form of commissions or other compensation based on the amount of profits from the sale of malt beverages and wines beyond the amount such salary may be fixed by its members at an annual meeting or by its governing body out of the general revenue of the club. Tips and gratuities added to the bills under club regulations shall not be considered profits from the sale of alcoholic beverages. Five, has no part of the net earnings inuring to the benefit of any stakeholder or member, and six, has been in continuous operation for at least one year prior to the application for a license hereunder. In addition to that definition, we wanted to add a definition for special event facility. Special event facility means any public place kept, used, maintained, advertised, and held out to the public as a place where special events, including but not limited to weddings, wedding receptions, private parties, and similar events are held in which provides meals for food service in connection with such events. Any such facility shall be equipped with an adequate and sanitary kitchen and dining room facility and shall be capable of preparing and cooking meals or serving catered meals and other food products associated with the special events on site. Any such establishment shall derive at least fifty percent of its total annual gross sales from rental of the special events for, from rentals for special events and the service of meal and food products in connection with such special events. The revenues received from alcohol sales shall never exceed fifty percent of the total annual gross sales for such facility. In addition to the definitions, we'd like to add section six dash eighty-three, which clarifies that nonprofit clubs are eligible for a pouring license. In order to be eligible for a pouring license, private club or nonprofit private club must meet the definition of a non-private, of a nonprofit private club as set forth in section six dash two herein. Where an application for a license is submitted for a nonprofit private club, the applicant, the application shall be made in the name of the highest elected officer and/or manager of the club or organization, and then there's a subsection A. No alcoholic beverage license shall be granted to a private club organized or operated primarily for the selling or serving of alcohol beverages. So they have to do more than just serve alcohol at this, at this facility. In addition to that, we are adding section eighty-two dash, section six dash eighty-four, which speaks to special events pouring licenses. And that reads, in order to be eligible for a pouring license, a special event facility must meet the definition of a special events facility as set forth in section six, six dash two herein as well as the following requirements. Number one, attendance by invitation to the party, party renting the special events facility only and not be open to the public. Number two, all alcoholic beverages served at the private function shall be supplied to the invited guests free of charge. Number three, the costs of the alcoholic beverages served at the private function are to be paid for by the host renting the special events facility. Number five, alcohol may be served only in conjunction with the service of, of meal and food products. And number five, alcohol must be served by a trained alcohol server who took, who holds either an alcohol handling permit issued by the city or another local government jurisdiction. The next amendment is to section six dash one twenty-four pouring requirements. To this section, we are just adding the words nonprofit private, private club and special event facility to the exemptions listed under the, the pouring licenses. So this, this is the portion where it exempts them from being required to meet the fifty percent food sales requirements. Instead of the fifty percent food sales, they'll have to meet the other requirements laid out in the definitions of each of those facilities and, and clubs. And finally, we are proposing a change to the city's fee schedule for nonprofit private clubs. And right now, the, the city's pouring licenses for for alcohol, for, for beer and wine is six hundred dollars apiece, and then five thousand dollars for liquor. For nonprofit private clubs that are veteran organizations, we're recommending the following fee schedule for beer. It's five hundred dollars for wine, five hundred dollars, and then really reducing the liquor pouring down to a thousand dollars, and then having Sunday sales set at five hundred dollars. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Rusty?
Just one quick on Rusty. I know you touched on it, but the savings for groups like the American Legion is, is pretty substantial on an annual basis, right? About, we did the calculation the other day. It's gonna cut their, their cost in about half for the liquor licenses, give or take. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, liquor license is going from five thousand down to one thousand, and the beer and wine are going from six hundred down to five hundred. So you're looking at forty-two hundred dollars in, in savings if they decide to do all three options. They could decide to do just beer and wine, or just liquor, or whatever. That, that's just a menu of options that they choose.
Rusty, what is our, our, our fee for Sunday sales pouring, the regular fee? I'm just curious.
I have to look at it. I think it's a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you that answer.
So that, yeah, I was just wondering, because I knew you had mentioned the six hundred for the other two and the five thousand, so I was just wondering about that one as well. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rusty. I'm gonna turn this over to Corky Welch to handle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the presentation and everything we've heard here tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two zero dash one seven, approval of ordinance two thousand and twenty seventeen for an amendment to section six dash two, six dash eighty-three, six dash eighty-four, and six dash one twenty-four of the alcohol beverage ordinance as it pertains to the issuance of pouring licenses for private clubs and special event facilities and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindley, all those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero, thank you. Everybody jumped to second that one. I, I see that we have the commander in the audience. Thank you for reaching out to us and glad to, glad to do something to help our veterans. Item seven is commercial, commercial building permits, 782020-476, issuance of two commercial building permits for construction of a food hall shell building, 1625 Roswell Street, M. Younger Homes LLC. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two commercial building permits have been issued at 1625 Roswell Street for the construction of two food hall shell buildings, 1,500 square feet and 2,000 square feet. The total estimated cost of the project is $450,000 and M. Younger Homes LLC is listed as a general contractor for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Mr. Lindley's ward, Mr. Lindley.
Yes, Rusty, for a very succinct update and report. And Susan, there may be alcohol involved, so stay tuned.
Yeah, this is for the food hall at the corner of Roswell Street and Hawthorne Avenue. They tore down the, the, the car wash that used to be here, be there and they've, they've done all the infrastructure work. So, it's now time to build the two buildings. There'll be two food hall buildings, one on Hawthorne and one on Roswell Street and then there'll be a little courtyard area in between. So, we've issued the permit, so he's gonna start constructing that and hopefully it'll be done within the next six months or so.
Thank you, sir. It's a lot of chatter on this over the last couple of years, so an exciting project and I think will be an enhancement to Smyrna's five points, which I share with my neighbor in Ward Two. With, without further ado, motion due pass as previously read and reported.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner, all those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero, thank you. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, 2020-470, approval of the October 29th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, 2020-471, approval of the November 2nd, 2020 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. And item C, 2020-472, approval of the November 2nd, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Pickens, do I have a second? Mr. Louis Wheaton, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero, thank you. Item nine is ward and committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
No report, thank you, Mayor.
That's the most dramatic no report I ever saw. Mr. Wagner?
As is probably my broken record, there's another election, January 5th. Get your absentee ballots and go vote in the runoff.
Mr. Lindley?
No report, sir.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to recognize Mr. Wade Lenica, one of the past councilmen, who's probably attended many, many, many of these meetings that went much later than that. We're happy to have you with us tonight, Wade.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. I would like to also welcome Mr. Wade Lenica and say hello to him. It's been a long time since I've seen him with the, I guess with the COVID and everything. We just aren't seeing people as much. But also, I would like, I don't think we'll be meeting again before the Thanksgiving holiday. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and also a safe one. Thank you.
Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to just mention a really wonderful Veterans Day celebration that was put on by American Legion and the Veterans Committee. Every year since 2008, if I, if I remember that right. And, and also, you know, shout out to Parks and Rec for moving the, the event inside to handle inclement weather and it was, it was just enjoyable. So, thanks Wade for all your, all your folks and everything you guys do. Thanks.
The committee did an excellent job with that audible, you know, moving inside to keep everybody masked and distanced and we really appreciate that, keeping everybody safe. Mr. Wheaton?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Just also wanted to echo Ms. Wilkinson's comments related to Thanksgiving. Hope everyone has a happy and health, healthy and, and very safe Thanksgiving. Make sure you abide by those guidelines about any assemblies with each other, with family. I know I'll be missing a lot of my family this year, but definitely pay attention to that. And also remember, in line with the proclamation from earlier, let's be mindful about the upcoming small business opportunities to support our local community that desperately certainly need, need our support. So, let's lean in and really help those businesses and keep them thriving for our community. And with that, are you?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
No, sir.
Mr. Cochran? Had quite a night, Mr. Cochran. Ms. Heather? Ms. Dina? Okay. Item 10 is show cause hearings, we have none. Item 11 is citizen input, I don't believe anybody signed up. If there's anybody out there that would like to come say anything quickly, please step forward. Alright, if there's no other business to be brought before this body, declare us adjourned at 9:35 PM. Thanks.
For the record, this is not a late meeting.